All right, let's go ahead and get started. This is the first of the meetings talking about the budget, but I guess I just wanted to start with a comment or remark that with the conversation you had at your last meeting, prioritizing with limited funds is hard. It's hard work. It's not easy. I appreciate the work and the time and the effort and consideration that you're putting into that. You know, as we perhaps shift and you look at some different priorities with the limited funds we have, it's hard to decide where to go with those. So, hard work, not easy. We're starting tonight, the budget season, believe it or not. It will run basically from tonight through November with a variety of different steps along the way. We're starting our conversation tonight with the CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Plan. It's a five-year plan that outlines all of the things that we pretty much touch and feel and build and maintain. It's not the operating budget, but it's the capital budget. And tonight, we're going to try something a little bit different. This is the first meeting where we talk about, you know, priorities and higher-level perspectives of limits and what we have and what we don't have. And we want your feedback on really, you know, do we have the right set of priorities? Do we have the right set of, you know, of things in, as you'll learn, the baskets, you know, going forward? So I will be taking the feedback that you're providing tonight, as well as Jay and all the other staff people that are here, and then we'll be crafting the CIP budget for you based upon the feedback that you gave us here tonight. And then that will be brought back to you and presented with the various projects and things that are being put into it for your review and approval. One little housekeeping note for some of you who are here, but that we took a little quick straw poll before all of you got here, and it was decided that we're running late enough tonight, and there's enough hunger in the audience that some pizzas might be appreciated. So you can gauge your time and your appetite and your food intake, knowing that there are a few pizzas that are going to be coming here probably in about half an hour or so. So you can still tear open your bag if you want, but just know that that's coming. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jay, who is going to take this through the CIP discussion.
Yeah, jump right into it. So as Dale said, you know, we do want to get your feedback on the CIP and what the priorities are. And we're going to, a little bit later, we're going to go through an exercise to hopefully help you inform us about what those priorities should be as we develop the 2020 through 2024 Capital Improvements Plan. Jump right into it. A little bit of an overview of what we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about the relationship between the operating budget and the CIP. As Dale indicated, we'll be getting to the operating budget later in the year. We usually start that process internally in July-August timeframe. Council usually getting involved in October-ish. We'll talk a little bit about our fiscal strategy going into the CIP, some of the things that we try to take care of, talk about the CIP process, including dates for upcoming work sessions, talk about our strategic goals and objectives. And I know we'll be talking about that more later as it relates to the work plan, but I want to talk about those as it relates to the Capital Improvements Plan. Preliminary impact of the 2020 CIP projects. We have gone through and had departments submit their projects at this point. We have not really done any review on them or started, you know, putting them through any prioritization process, but just preliminary impact of what those projects and what we think that might look like. Also look at our financial policies and how that may or may not comply with our financial policies. And then receive, ask for direction from the City Council on three or four different items related to the CIP. So a little bit about how the operating budget and the CIP relate to each other. So the green circle here is our annual operating budget. And we start that out in January 1st with a brand-new budget. And throughout the course of the year, we spend money and we receive money in the form of revenue. And I'm just calling those financial results. And hopefully, on December 31st of each year, we have both realized more revenue than we anticipated, and we have spent less money than we anticipated. And that, anything that's left over goes into what we call fund balance. And we talked about this a little bit during the council training session, talked a little bit about fund balance. But basically, that's the savings account that the city has for emergencies, and it can also be used for one-time expenditures like capital projects. So each year, we use a portion of our fund balance to fund our capital budget. So we're going to be talking about our capital budget tonight. One of the revenue sources that we use to pay for those projects is a portion of our fund balance. Now, the City Council has a fund balance policy. We'll talk more about that in a little bit, but we want to make sure that we don't use too much of that fund balance and fall out of compliance with that fund balance policy. So also used to fund the capital budget is long-term debt. Every year, we issue debt. We take out loans, basically, to fund those capital expenditures contained in that budget. And long-term debt results in debt service, which then flows back into the annual budget. So we have debt service payments that comes into the annual operating budget. We also have the fund balance use for capital that comes back into the budget, and then the whole cycle kind of starts again. So they are related to each other. Particularly, the fund balance piece really relates those two budgets to each other. So when we take a look at some of our fiscal strategies, on the operating budget side of things, we budget based upon averages. We don't know from one year to the next how much it's going to snow. I mean, who would have predicted that February, we would have had record snowfalls for the entire winter, just in the month of February? But we budget based upon averages and hope that throughout the course of the year, some items may be over, some may be under, but overall, that the budget will, you know, at least, it will at least have enough money so that we'll be able to meet those expenses. Departments are responsible for managing their budgets to the bottom line. So each department head is responsible for managing their own budget. And our expectation is that budgets will not be fully expended. And as we'll talk about, our entire capital budgeting strategy, or not entire, but a good chunk of our capital budgeting strategy, depends upon that. We very much discourage the use-it-or-lose-it philosophy. We, as I said, our expectation is that departments will under-expend their budget. You know, if we took all the, if we said, wow, you know, the police department didn't spend all of their overtime budget, therefore, we're going to reduce it next year, I bet the next year, the chief will make sure that he expends his entire overtime budget because it instills that philosophy, you know, if you don't use it, you're going to lose it. And we very much discourage that. So the continuation of our current capital program is very much dependent upon this strategy, that we will over-realize revenue, that we will under-expend the budget, we'll put money back into fund balance, and then we'll use somewhere, in the past, we've been using two and a half to maybe $3 million of fund balance to fund capital projects. Because we'll see in this CIP, we're, in the next five years, we're anticipating using more fund balance than that because actually, our fund balance has gotten well above what our goal is. And in order to reduce the amount of money that we need to borrow, it may be fiscally prudent to pay for more items with cash, which is what our fund balance is. Another item that's key is we need to match revenues and expenditures. We need to use one-time revenues for one-time expenses and ongoing revenues with ongoing expenses. We don't want to use, what we don't want to do is be using one-time revenues to pay for ongoing expenses. Doesn't work. I mean, if you, if we use a one-time source of revenue to pay for a new police officer, the next year, we don't have that revenue source to pay for that same officer. So we need to make sure that we're managing those up. Also, when we're going through the CIP, new projects should be added in the out-years of the CIP. And what do I mean by out-years? So I mean, you, probably in the last two years, maybe the last three years of the CIP is when those new projects should be added. Now, sometimes they will be added in the first year of the CIP, but that needs, that should be an exception, and there needs to be some sort of an exceptional situation to cause us to do that. Because what we want to be doing is planning. The CIP is a plan, and we want to make sure that, you know, those first couple of years of that CIP should be pretty much locked down. And that allows us, again, to continue to plan throughout the years. Another thing we will, we'll be talking about as we go through projects are new projects versus maintenance projects. One of the criticisms that local governments sometimes receive is that, well, you're just building new things and you're not taking care of what you have. And 20 or so years ago, that was a real concern in Eau Claire, and the streets had deteriorated to a condition that was unacceptable to the community. The community, the City Council, made a very purposeful effort to include additional funding for street maintenance. And we now have streets that are in very good condition on average throughout the community. And then funding, pay-as-you-go versus pay-as-you-use. So when we use fund balance and we're paying, we're using cash to pay for an expense, that's really what we're calling pay-as-you-go type of funding. When we issue debt, we're doing what I'm calling pay-as-you-use. And what I mean by that is, so we issue debt and we pay it off over the next 20 years. And let's say we use the proceeds from that debt issue to build a new street that's got a 20-year life. So over the next 20 years, the taxpayers are paying for that debt service through their property taxes. At the same time, they're using that new street that was built. So we're paying for it as we're using that, as opposed to paying for it with cash where previous people, previous taxpayers contributed to that fund balance, and I don't know, maybe they move out of town. And they've paid for it, but now they're not getting the advantage of it, or they're not able to use it, if that makes sense. So a lot of times, again, we're trying to match funding sources with the benefits that the community is receiving. So in terms of the process, just real quickly, you know, we're here now, end of May. June 7th, we expect to distribute the CIP electronically to the City Council. June 11th and June 18th, we've got scheduled for City Council work sessions. June 19th, June 26th, and July 15th are scheduled for various commission reviews of the CIP, Transit Waterways Plan Commission. July 22nd is scheduled for public discussion, and July 23rd, we're anticipating City Council action on the CIP. So June 11th and 18th is when we're looking at work sessions to actually go through specific projects within the CIP. So the City Council recent-
Can we back up that?
Yeah, sure.
I'm going to take a couple of questions.
Oh, I will, we will get these posted to the website as well. I apologize for not having printouts. So earlier this year, the City Council went through a process of refining our strategic goals and objectives, and you'll be having more discussion of all those as they relate to a work plan later this evening, but just run through those real quickly. First of those is to support economic prosperity for all with diverse creative economic development and inclusive housing options, to provide safe, functional, and accessible infrastructure and services that are environmentally sensitive and sustainable, to optimize the city's organizational potential, develop, nurture, and revitalize safe, healthy, and connected neighborhoods, facilitate an engaged community, create engaging opportunities to make Eau Claire livable, lovable, and fun, and nurture community-wide opportunities for personal learning, growth, and development. So those are the strategic goals and objectives that the City Council has approved. And, not approved-
Yeah, there's some slight language there.
Yeah. And what we want to be able to do is to use the Capital Improvements Plan as a tool to help achieve the strategic goals and objectives of the City Council. So how do we start doing that, or how do we do that, I guess, in a more formalized manner? So, and just, I guess, before we get to that, how does staff use these strategic goals and objectives? Well, it provides us guidance in preparing the CIP request. So if, you know, if Scott knows that affordable housing is a priority of the City Council, that may inform him of CIP projects that he might request or include as part of this process. Also provides a lens for the City Manager and myself to look through in choosing between projects competing for limited resources. So if a project is, you know, directly aimed at a specific strategic goal or objective of the City Council, and another project really isn't meeting any of those strategic goals and objectives, it would seem to make some sense that that project that's meeting a goal or objective would be chosen for funding over a project that's not. And ultimately, we want to report to the City Council on how the CIP is meeting the strategic goals and objectives. So what I did is I went through, and this is getting to the exercise that we're going to have, is I went through the projects within our CIP, and I made kind of some general groupings of projects. Again, not going into specific details of any particular project. And I put those groupings then underneath each of the strategic goals and objectives. And these are just for the general fund projects or the funds that receive general fund support. So for example, you're not going to find water or wastewater projects in this list. You're not going to find tax incremental district projects in this list. You're not going to find library projects in this list. You will find projects within the Hobbs Ice Arena, Fairfax Pool, streets, transportation improvements, those types of things that are being funded through the general fund. So within the strategic goal of providing safe, functional, and accessible infrastructure and services that are environmentally sensitive and sustainable, we've got street and sidewalk improvements, we've got parking facilities, we've got bridge maintenance, public building maintenance, and renewable energy initiatives. So those are kind of some big buckets or baskets of projects that fit within that strategic goal. And then within the goal of optimizing the city's organizational potential, we've got management information systems. Really, any type of software was, and related hardware, was put into that category. And then we've got other equipment. Within the CIP, we've got other pieces of equipment that departments have requested because it normally results in some efficiency for their particular area. You know, a new sign manufacturing machine, a new mower, or something along those lines. And that's just within that other equipment piece. Creating engaging opportunities to make Eau Claire livable, lovable, and fun. We got, we have our recreation facilities and maintenance associated with those recreational facilities. Right now, we're investing over $1 million in the Hobbs Ice Arena to put in a new ice sheet, just as an example of a project that would fall within that recreational facility maintenance. We also have recreation facility enhancements. So we're also, we also have projects that are constructing new facilities in our recreational system. For example, new pavilions and restrooms in our parks would be an example of recreational facility enhancement. And then we're also periodically developing new parks and facilities. So I believe in the existing CIP, we've got funding in there for the Northwest Regional Park and development of that, and we've got funding for, study for Princeton Valley Park. So we do, within the CIP, have new park development and facilities, and I think that those all contribute to making Eau Claire livable, lovable, and fun. So if we take a look at, and this is looking at the existing CIP, not the one that we're going to be developing, but the existing 2019 through 2023 CIP, we look at the 2019 projects that are included in there, and these are also the projects that are included within the operating budget. About 66% of those projects fall into the category of safe, functional, and accessible infrastructure. About 15% into the category of making Eau Claire livable, lovable, and fun. About 12% into safe, healthy, and connected neighborhoods. 6% optimizing the organizational potential, and 1% environmentally sensitive and sustainable services. Similarly, if we looked at the 2020 projects, again, in last year's CIP, about 64% fall into that safe, functional, accessible infrastructure. 9% livable, lovable, fun. About 19% safe, healthy, and connected neighborhoods. About 7% optimizing the organizational potential, and 1% environmentally sensitive and sustainable services. Now, you've probably noticed that there are several of the strategic goals and objectives that I have not listed on here. And that's because there aren't any general fund-funded projects that are meeting those particular goals or objectives. For example, economic development, okay? Economic development is primarily funded through tax incremental districts. Tax incremental districts are not general funds. So it's not like we don't have projects for that that are contributing to economic development, but they aren't general fund-funded projects. Similarly, on the lifelong learning, we've got a big library project in the CIP, but that's not general fund-funded. So that's not really showing up on this particular list.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So if you go back to the point right there, I really don't expect you to be a genie, but that 64, 66% that's functional, accessible infrastructure, that sounds like maintenance building kind of stuff?
It's largely, largely street and bridge maintenance.
Okay, so it's walkability, the-
It's our-
That's where I'm just wondering, would we expect that to be over 50% all the time?
If you, I think that if you want our streets to continue to be in the condition that they're in right now, I would expect that to be over 50%. We spend about $6 million a year just on our annual street program, and then we've also got bridge work in there from time to time. We've got sidewalk program in there as well.
Trail maintenance is a good question.
Trail maintenance is actually making the community livable, lovable, and fun. Or no, actually, I put that into connected neighborhoods. I put trails into connected neighborhoods. But, you know, maintaining what we have takes a big chunk of what our CIP is. Now, that's not to say that that's the right mix of services. And this is really, I'm putting this up here just to provide kind of a benchmark of what's in the CIP at the present time. Doesn't mean-
So I think my underlying question too would be, once this, we get back to a better status of having remediated the repair on roads and bridges, would we expect it to stay at this high level?
Yeah, $6 million is kind of, seems to be about that level that we need to stay at.
Thank you.
Dave, you want to chime in at all?
Right now, our pavement ratings are staying high. They're in good shape. They're not dipping. They're anywhere they're at. So if it did go down, funding would be less, but the worst cost for that would be higher by 10 years.
And it's not, by the same token, our pavement conditions aren't getting better than, or much better at the amount that we're spending. It's pretty much keeping it level.
That's what I was asking. So maybe we should, we have a sexier title there so that people would feel good about that 64% there. 60 sexy, 64, can you say that sexy?
64.
So now we're going to-
I can't, I can't say it.
So now we'd like you all to help us out, and that is, we're going to go through a CIP priorities exercise. So some of you noticed in the back of the room, there are some baskets, and each council member is going to receive $25. I was working to solve our budget problem and printing money. I was printing money last week. And so each of you is going to receive $25, and there are 17 baskets in the back of the room. Each one of those baskets represents a grouping of CIP projects that are funded by the general fund, organized by a strategic goal. So exactly the way I just went through it is how those baskets are organized in the back of the room. You can place as much or as little money in each basket as an indication of which projects or goals you would like to see funded or feel should be a priority for the City Manager to consider in preparing the recommended CIP.
Jay, can I ask a question about the previous-
Yeah.
So you had said that previous councils had addressed the street issues?
Yep.
And so when you get the question back down, what did this look like before that happens? Like, was it-
I wasn't here, so I'm going to-
It's going to be a long time ago.
Okay, I'm just curious.
It's been about a 20-year, it's been about a 20-year effort because it took about 20 years before that of not congesting it. Streets take a while.
Of course, yeah.
I'd have to go back and look, but it would have been probably less, a lot less than this.
What I will tell you, Laura, is that, was that the amount of money that we were, not on streets, but the amount of money that we were spending on public building maintenance was substantially less when I arrived here. It was a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, and that was not keeping pace with the maintenance requirements in our buildings. And now, we're investing five-plus million dollars in City Hall to renovate that facility. Now, some of that could have been done over time had sufficient funding been included within those budgets.
Fair enough.
Again, that's just an example of, you know, an area where it wasn't being funded sufficiently. And now, we're spending a lot of money trying to catch up with that.
So we have this PCI index, the pavement index. We were down in that fair-to-core area, and we've been able to bring it up to, where's Dave?
We're, I don't have the numbers right, but it's like, when the high 80% is excellent to get in shape for our pavements right now.
And we've stabilized there. So we've been able to stabilize it so that, you know, the, the poorer streets are being, you know, fixed at the same rate that they're going down. So we really haven't seen much more increase in that, but we've stabilized it so it's, you know, not going down.
So I guess maybe you get what I'm getting at though here is that, so if the percentage was super low, has this been a pretty stable rate that's gotten up to that 80 to 100%? And now, it's just sustaining it?
Now, it's sustaining it because, although the level, so what's happening now is the level of funding is pretty flat, but the cost of building the streets is coming up, you know, within that.
Sure.
Jerry? Do our multi-trails have like a similar pavement rating system, or are they separate?
We're not using, are we using PCI on the trails?
We're starting to do some of that. They're not quantified as frequently as our streets are, but it is something with, you know, our trails, but our parking lots, our citywide parking lots at Hobbs and stuff like that. So anything that is pavement will have, it's our goal, and it'll probably, I don't know if it'll be this year, but by the end of next year, have ratings for all levels.
And Dave might be able to put more specifics to this, but our big push to the adding bike recreation trails started about 30 years ago, 25, 30 years ago. So many of the bigger structures of trails that we built, you know, 20, 25 years ago are now starting to get to that point where they're going to have to be replaced. And they were nice and new and shiny then, but so probably disproportionately, we have more trails that are- more trails that are going to be needing repair, you know, in the next few years than we've had in the last few years. Is that a fair statement, Dave?
Yes, you know, some of the, like the Long North Crossing, you know, it seems like it's fairly new to some of us that grew up here, but those trails, we did some pretty extensive maintenance on our replacements last year, so Dale said it's about twenty-five years or so, and then the asphalt trails are, they need a renovation. First Avenue, there's Carolina Chippewa, people get complaints about that, and that's on our list too, that's asphalt. That's why we're going with concrete in our downtown trails. We get a little longer life out of those and a little bit wider than the old trails.
So, like they knew when we went from Madison Street up to the High Bridge, you know, we made that one in concrete.
Can you remind me too, like, how many miles of streets we've added over the last twelve years?
How many?
How many miles of streets have we added in Eau Claire in the last twelve years?
We add about, since I've been here in last-
Streets.
Since I've been here for the last six years, it's been about a mile and a half a year is what we add. So, it's not astronomical, but it's a slow and steady increase, and we have over three hundred miles of streets in the city.
We've got those numbers, and we've got a number of different, a number of different metrics that we talked about with the council during the last operating budget. Certainly get those out to you.
Do you have a question?
I did. Steve mentioned that the money for the library renovation will not be coming out of the general fund, so it's not included in the CIP. Can you just refresh on where that money is coming from?
Well, it's included in the CIP.
Okay.
Okay. It's not coming out of the, it's not, the debt service for that's not being paid out of the general fund. It's being paid out of the library.
Okay.
Now, that being said, and we'll, I'll have some numbers up here, that's being said, the debt service is being paid through the property tax levy.
Okay.
So, I want to make sure that that's understood, you know, just because it's coming out of the library fund, the sort, how the library gets that, the money to pay for that, is through the property tax levy.
Was there other questions?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess as far as the exercise-
Yep.
Can you just like finish explaining what we're going to do, and then I have a question, maybe?
Yep, yep. Okay, so, I know pizza was going around, so I'm just gonna run through that anyway.
We picked a really poor time for that.
So, each council member's going to receive twenty-five, twenty-five dollars, twenty-five one-dollar bills. Doesn't signify any dollar amount, just twenty-five one-dollar bills that I printed up last week.
Can you print back?
So, we're out at the raft, right? And Jay's at, got the printing machine, and he's over there cutting, he's cutting these dollar bills. And then, if you happen to be out at the raft, you'll notice that some of the extra ones he had, so Dave in his office has his ficus tree, and there's always this tension between who's spending most of the money, right? And so, now, if you go in and look at Jay's tree, or Dave's tree, there's little dollar bills that are clipped to the branches of it. So, now Dave really does have a money tree.
Wait, real, real dollar bills?
No, no, not real dollar bills, J-dollar bills.
Which, which he did not make green or gray because he didn't want to get anywhere close to having the police department bill.
I didn't want to be doing federal time. So, there are seventeen baskets in the back of the room. Each basket represents a group, one of the groupings of the CIP projects that I went through before that are funded by the general fund, and they're organized by strategic goals. So, you'll see that printed in green towards the bottom of each basket on the paper is, you know, will be like streets, street and sidewalks, bridges, those, kind of those larger buckets that I talked about. And then, on the larger sheet, is what the strategic goal or objective is that that, that those items are addressing. You can place as much or as little money in each basket is an indication of which projects or goals that you feel is a priority for CIP funding. Remember, these, this is the capital improvement plan. It's not the operating budget, so funds should be used to buy, maintain, or improve fixed assets such as building vehicles, equipment, or land. It's considered a capital expenditure when it's newly purchased, or it's something that we're extending the useful life of an existing asset by at least a year, such as repairing our road. Costs must exceed five thousand dollars, and costs are usually one-time in nature, so it's not a cost that's going to occur year after year after year after year. It should be something that, you know, we pay for it, and then hopefully, hopefully we're done with.
So, capital items that departments have that are less than five thousand dollars are in the operating budget?
So, if I, if, what I wanted to do, or what we wanted to do was kind of provide you a baseline. This is, this is just a dollar representation of those percentages you, some of those percentages you saw before. So, projects that are included for 2019 and planned for 2020, and the current CIP, not the one we're working on, this is the distribution of those. So, if you wanted to take your twenty-five dollars, and you said, you know what, I'd really like how the current, what the current CIP and how those funding allocations are made, then you would put ten dollars in the basket for street and sidewalk improvements, you would put one dollar in for parking facilities, one dollar in for bridge maintenance, and so on. That does add up to twenty-five dollars. If you want to do something other than that, if you say, you know what, I think that, you know, we should put more money in for recreational trails, and, you know, what we're, the current CIP is a dollar, maybe I want to put two dollars in for recreational trails. I want to double the amount of money that we're putting into that. You can certainly do that. Now, there are also baskets back there for strategic goals that do not currently have CIP-funded projects. So, there's a basket back there for affordable housing. There's a basket back there for economic development. There's a, there's other baskets back there. But, but, and, and if, you know, if you choose to put money in those baskets, what you're saying is that I would like to use general fund dollars to support this initiative. For example, I would like to use general fund dollars for affordable housing to build new affordable housing using general fund or taxpayer dollars, or to rehab existing housing using that, or on economic development, that I'd like to use general fund dollars for that, not just TIF dollars, but general fund dollars. So, and, and, you know, the funds are limited, so you've got twenty-five dollars, and, you know, just like, you know, the funding that we have with the CIP is limited, so you have to make choices, just like earlier. This evening, we made choices as far as the CDVG program. Laura, you have questions?
Oh, no, that was, you answered it.
Oh, did I?
Yeah, I was going to say, what if it was rehabbing an existing HCS facility that could be rehabbed into-
Right, yep, yep, absolutely, absolutely. So, so even though we don't currently have projects in the CIP that address some of the strategic goals, there's a basket back there. And, so what we're going to do is, is I'm going to give you your wads of money and set you loose, put money in the baskets, and then we'll add it up, and we'll take a little break, we'll add it up, and we'll report back to you about how that compares to how we've, how we've been doing things. Catherine?
I think Kate was before for questions.
Yeah, so, so I am thinking about how, unlike the general fund, the capital improvement fund has a little more flexibility in terms, because of how our levy limits work and how they're much more strictly constrained on our operating budget. And so, so I'm, I'm think, like, trying to kind of stay within this really fun, like, twenty-five dollar activity. I'm thinking, like, would it be accurate to say that we are given twenty-five dollars for these projects, but we decide, just to use an example, no, actually, we really want to see the library being built, so we're going to take, we're going to create more money and take thirty dollars to, so that we have that money for the library. Like, is it fair to say that, like, it's not quite as strictly confined as it would, in real life, as it would be in this exercise?
I would agree that it's not as strictly confined as the operating budget is. So, the city council has policies, both on fund balance as well as debt, and, and as we'll, as, we'll see when we get a little bit further on, where we're kind of seeing the CIP going in terms of dollars, does not push us up to those limits, and, you know, I think that that would be our recommendation from a, from a financial management perspective, is we don't get right up to those limits of the policy that would leave ourselves a little, a little wiggle room, if you will, for unforeseen things that may come, that may come up. But it does, but there is more latitude or more discretion in saying, oh, okay, well let's, you know, let's maybe add this CIP project and, you know, push us a little closer to those, a little closer to those limits. But some of those discussions will be probably discussions that we start having, you know, once, once the city manage, in the, in the work sessions, once, once it's been, the CIP's been put together, and I can tell you exactly where we're at as far as those different policies, and, you know, council can decide if they, you know, if they want to, want to add things to that CIP. Again, our recommendation is going to be to, you know, not to push right up to the limits of those policies, because then that doesn't leave much of any discretion for future years. But, but yeah, it's not as strict as the operating budget with levy limits where it's, we're just really-
Yeah, and I just wanted to raise that because that was something that took me like years on council for it to really click, that that, like, those different, those different levy limits really make a huge difference on, like, with our operating budget, it's like down to the dollar that we, you know, we can't spend, right?
To summarize that, the debt service is not constrained by the levy limits that we have a strategic.
And, and on the operating side, it is very much a zero-sum game. I mean, you, with levy limits, you just can't, if you increase one area, it has to come from, from another area. With, with the CIP, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be one-to-one, but we do have those policies that we need to stay in compliance with.
And the debt does go to the tax levy, so there's an impact to the tax levy.
Yep, yep, yep. So, is everybody clear on?
Wait, Catherine, do you have?
Well, Catherine, did you have another question?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Then Andrew has some questions, and then Lauren.
Okay.
We are inquisitive. Where's that bucket?
Yeah.
Can you make money being asking questions? How does a state shared revenue formulate into this?
It doesn't. It's the operating, that's on the operating budget.
Okay. I mean, not for the levy, but just for, like, does the state give any funds towards street improvements? Zero?
Well, we get, we get funding, funding from the state, state, but those are all in the operate, those are all in the operating budget. Now, to the extent that we don't spend those dollars, they'll flow back into fund balance, which then flows, can flow back into the capital program. But those dollars are pretty much used, used to maintain the streets on the operating budget side of things. So, Steve Thompson and his crew are out patching potholes, they're out chip sealing, and those, those funds.
Although there are, there's some programs, bridges, and, I don't know if that's where she was going, where we get state aid for bridges or some of the arterial streets.
Yeah, those are, well, those are, those are different programs that are, are used for, for reconstruction and maintenance of the bridges, and, and we also do receive local road improvement funding, LRIP funding, that can be used, and those, that does get factored into the CIP.
So, there is state, there is some state transportation funds that come in and help us with some of those bigger projects and contribute to some of the local roads, so.
So, like, actually, Short Street, the Short Street Bridge, we use that, Eddie Street?
Short Street, Melby Street.
Melby.
We're getting LRIP on the state streets.
LRIP, like every other year, we get those?
Every other year, yeah. Dewey Street Bridge, the Cars and Per Cosley, those are, I think in the last six years, it's been above a million and a half a year on average what we've gotten for those special capital funds.
So, in this hypothetical model, are those types of funds included in the twenty-five? Or they could be above and beyond the twenty-five?
They're included in, they're included in the twenty-five. They're included in these numbers.
Okay. Another question, I heard that we have windzents bucks. What about wheel tax bucks? Would that be added on then? Let's just say the city decided to do a wheel tax, could that be, I have no idea how this actually calculates for anybody watching at home, let's say five extra dollars. Would that be above and beyond twenty-five CIP dollars? Would that increase our purchasing power?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It would increase your purchasing power, which you could use one of two ways. You could either borrow less, or you could have more capital improvement projects.
Another question that I can just park, I don't need an answer at this moment. This is like a really big fund balance question, is that right now, how the city, how I understand the city does their financing is, any underspent money in the operating budget then is turned into fund balance dollars to offset that, and we have to comply with our fund balance policy. And so, that's why departments are encouraged to underspend so that they could have money to fund this. Although if Department X underspends by, I'm just using hypothetical numbers, ten dollars, and Department Y underspends by fifty thousand dollars, there was a discrepancy there, and wondering how do we create consistency for what's going to be paying off for that debt service? Could we, instead of using that underspent money, could we include in the operating budget X amount of dollars every year that's going to pay down the CIP? That could be answered another time, because that's like, I think, flipping the budgeting process.
I think, I think you, I think you end up at the same, I think you end up at the same place, though.
I think, though, if you, to me, it seems like the X factor is that Department X and Department Y, they could be underspending by different amounts times however many departments we have in the city. It's not consistent, it's not relied upon number, whereas if you're budgeting in the operating budget to say, we are going to, say, every year, five percent of the operating budget will pay down our debt, or whatever that number is, how do we make it more predictable versus try not to spend it all because we need to do something?
I mean, I don't think, I don't think we can make it more predictable. You know, we're, we're budgeting based upon averages, and, and the department directors all, you know, work really hard to manage their budgets so that they, they come in under. The other thing is, we've got budgets that are of vastly different scales, so we got the city attorney's budget, that's a, you know, that's, I don't know, half a million dollars. We've got the police department budget that is, you know, ten times or more of that, more of that. So, you know, it's much more likely that the police department is going to come in, you know, a hundred thousand dollars under budget than it is the city attorney's office because you're just dealing with budgets that, so if you look at it in terms of a percentage, the percentages might be close to the same, but the dollar amounts are going to be, going to be entirely, entirely different.
You'll also see variation between departments in how much they go under or over, so, you know, you could have a year where the police department had a really big rash of, you know, crimes that required, you know, a bunch of overtime, or, you know, like last year with the snow plowing, if you compared the snow plow budget, you know, from year to year, you're going to see significant differences, just like with what happened here in 19. So, it, it, there's variability, but what's nice is, I'm going to use the law of large numbers, and there's enough there that on average, you know, you're right, because there are differences between the different departments, but it can also vary quite a bit between departments, but in the end, we're able to see, you know, somewhere between that two and three million dollars, which is really only a few percentage points.
Yeah.
So, when you think about a budget, you know, we're collectively coming in under budget, you know, as a whole, somewhere in between two and three percent, which, that's pretty tight. I mean, it's a big number when you say two to three million dollars, but it's still pretty tight.
The other thing that's in there is, you know, the single largest expenditure item in our operating budget are personnel expenses, so when we underexpend the budget, it's usually because personnel costs come in less because we have turnover and other things happen. When we budget, we have to budget one hundred percent of those personnel costs. We assume that everybody is going to be here for the entire year because we don't want to run into a situation where we don't have enough money to pay, to pay our people. So, by doing what you suggested, by, if we were budgeting a number in there, we would actually have to increase the operating budget to accommodate budgeting, but budgeting some extra money in there for debt service because we still have to budget one hundred percent of our personnel costs. So- So, I think it would be challenging to try to do that. But as Dale said, you know, we've, you know, I've got, I'm usually working off a 20 years of history, or at least 10 years of history, that allows, allows me to, you know, make, or allows us to make these generalizations, like usually somewhere between $2 and $3 million, we're, we're returning to the, to fund balance. So, we're pretty com- comfortable using $2 to $3 million of fund balance to fund the capital projects the next year. We, that's, it's been fairly predictable along those lines. See, I, I think you're third in line, Dave. Andrew?
I, I would just say, I mean, this is something I really would be interested in looking at more. And again, it's okay if it's one-on-one. I think for me, if I speak really authentically what's underneath that, but there's two things. One, I mean, is there a different way to do it? I am interested in that. And then if you unpack that, another layer is sometimes I feel that there's a logic applied to council members if they wanna try a new initiative, that we don't have the money for it, it's not in the budget, we can't do it, versus, okay, we have all this money that gets returned, and then it's like, well, you can't do it, even if there's extra money, because we have to use that for fund balance. And so, to me, sometimes it feels like it's fair or unfair of my interpretation, it feels like it's used as a, a roadblock. And so, just thinking, is there another way that we can move beyond a feeling of a roadblock at some times to feeling like everybody has resources, or at least understands the resources, to achieve policy and/or program objectives? So.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, that's what we're trying to do here today with, with the exercise that we're gonna go, go through, is getting, trying to get council input at the beginning of the process, where we've even gone through and, and prepared, and prepared a CIP. And we're gonna be looking for, you know, certainly open to similar discussions when we get, we get to the operating, the operating budget.
So, the last question I have, and then a short statement, is how is this exercise going to be used? I mean, will you be taking this as directive of whatever our average is, that's how you're gonna try to build it? Or is this just trying to be educational for us? I mean, I get a little concerned if this is actually gonna be applied then to how you build the budget.
For the CIP. So, we are hopeful that this gives us some guidance at the policy level of where, what your priorities are. And after you've done your exercise, to the extent that there are differences between what we've done and, you know, historically, and, and what you do there, we wanna drill down into that a little bit and say, well, okay, for those of you who, you know, voted to do, you know, different set of priorities, help us understand what that means and what that looks like. And so, and to the extent that we listen to you, and, you know, you wanna have a shift in that priorities, and you're communicating what that might look like, when we put together the CIP, we will do the best we can to try to align, you know, the CIP with the, you know, that policy direction or indications that you're, you know, able to articulate through, not only the, the numbers that'll come out of the exercise, but also the discussion we'll have afterwards.
I, I would say that I'll try to have an open mind to this and also a little fun, because that's important value, right? To me, it seems, there was a question on the campaign trail that was like this, and I remember as a person who served and trying to answer, it's like, it's so much more complex than allocating $100. I mean, it's, there's just a lot more complexities of that. And I've also been on the other side of this exercise in my professional work, where we, departments asked a local government body to basically rank one, two, or three on priority. And of course, it's like, nothing is personal, and everybody's valuable. And then the water cooler talk is, what'd you get? Were you a one, were you a two? And so I just worry a little bit about what this message sends, whatever shakes out, that I don't want it to impede on morale, or that there's some type of value that's being said, even though we are putting a numerical dollar value on it. I think it's much more complex than putting money into a container. And so I, I just hope that we're afforded opportunity to unpack that and give it each department the, the, the attention that it deserves for the public.
So, I, I agree with those, those concerns, and, and we are hopeful that that's not, that that's not, that that's not... You know, ultimately, we've talked about this a little bit as a staff. And again, the, the idea is for, for you at a policy level perspective to give us some sense of what your priorities are. And, and again, to the extent that there's differences, that you can help articulate what that might look like, and then we can go back and talk to the departments about, you know, because, you know, if there's a significant change, I don't know that we, you know, we won't match it, you know, you know, exactly, but it gives us an indication of where the council's priorities are compared to, you know, what we've done historically. And it might match up exactly. But, you know, to the extent that you have some, some other, you know, priorities, you'd like to see some, some slightly different interests, it gives us a way to look at all the projects that are out there and talk to staff about ideas and try to, you know, this CIP is a big ship, and it's not going to change, you know, quickly, it doesn't change on a dime. But this helps give us some higher-level policy indication of where you'd like to see it be going, and so that we can, you know, make those adjustments to, so that you can then see that we're making, and we're wanting to work with you to make adjustments to align with what your priorities are.
And this, this may not significantly affect the 2020 projects in the CIP that we're developing. And it may or may not significantly affect the 2021 projects. But I think we're, like Dale said, you know, this is a big ship, you're not just gonna turn it on a dime, but then it starts affecting, you know, projects in year three, year four, year five, where we can plan for those, because a lot of those 2020 projects are already in the works. They're already planned for, they're tough to, you know, it's tough to slide a bunch of new projects into 2020. And so I said, even to our department ads, we tell them, if you're gonna submit something new, it should be in the, in the last year or two of the CIP. So, but I, I think that that's where we see is us going then, is trying to use this to start forming and shaping those, you know, those outer years of the CIP, to start turning this, this aircraft carrier, this big ship in the direction the council wants to see it go.
It does a shift.
Yes.
I think we heard each other.
Okay.
Thank you.
Two things. First of all, the participatory budgeting project, is that factored in yet to capital improvement? Because, as I understand it, the process is set to be worked on this year, with understanding that there would be, well, I guess if the council decides, an allocation toward that program next year. Has that already been included in, in the drafts of the CIP?
Sure. Now, everything that we're talking about here so far is, is from the last CIP. That being said, Andrew, Scott has submitted a request for funding for participatory budgeting for the next, for the next CIP. But if that's a priority of yours, you know, that would fall into the category of engage, the priority to engage citizens, I would put a dollar, a dollar in there. So, that's a priority, or two dollars, or three.
Right, then, then we're gonna say, what would that look like for you? And you're gonna say, just.
Just the more budget.
Right.
And then my second question is, something that I'm pretty interested in is, a few years ago, I helped make a budget amendment, I think this was in 2010 or 11, to help the Sojourner House get started. Now, there's already a discussion around a potentially redo of a shelter, warming shelter, and community center, kinda like what they did in La Crosse potentially. What bucket do you think that kind of a project?
Affordable housing.
Would be affordable housing, okay. Okay.
Just to clarify on the participatory budgeting, so we have a, we have money in 2019 budget to pay a consultant to help us establish the process. Now, are we expecting to do like a public engagement process in 2020? Or would that, would we be paying a consultant this year, working on getting that process in place, and then allocating that money in 2021?
Scott has submitted a money that would be available in 20.
For the, for the public.
For, for capital, for capital projects.
For the capital projects, right. So, we would be taking the consultant's work, which hopefully will be more of a turnkey-type thing, we'd be able to turn that key on in, in 20.
I do still have a question.
Okay, I was thinking, I was thinking you were in the queue, so.
Yes.
And you're still in the queue too, Dave.
Maybe it was just done for illustrative purposes, but I was curious.
I have to leave.
I was just curious why, like, 4% of budget was kinda like the minimum selected? Is it like for some reason that, because $25, so each dollar is 4% of our budget?
Oh, I, no.
Like, is that just for just almost purposes?
It was just, it's just.
Because that's the minimum funding that we're gonna need for something?
No, it's just 20, there's 17 buckets, I wanted, I wanted to be able to book more than one. Yeah.
Worth a million dollars.
The point I wanted to get is like, we're talking about, well, like $15 million or something, and we're talking about each one is like $10,000 or something.
No, there was no magic to it, and in fact, these numbers are really rounded too.
Well, I kinda figured.
Yeah. Again, it's, it's really, it's really to get a sense, not a, it's not a precision instrument, it's really just to get an overall sense of what the priorities of the council are.
Cool.
Are we ready?
Let's go some money.
Dave, you good?
Yep.
I wanna make sure that you have another slide here.
I'm sure that Catherine has.
I asked her to fill that.
All right. So, here are the results.
In the survey sense, so, you know, what, I guess, you know, when I'm, when I'm looking at this, what is this telling me is, you know, it's telling me that council is, as a whole, is interested in looking at spending additional money on renewable energy initiatives. That, that certainly jumps out. More on affordable housing development, more on an engaged community, more on general fund dollars on economic development. Those are the, certainly ones that, that jump out at, jump out at me. What about you, Dale?
Yeah, and, and a lot less on streets and parks and bridges and...
And I don't know, you know, getting back to Catherine's point, I, I don't know that that's a directive to spend less money on streets. I'm kinda looking at it, kinda the converse, is, is there are other areas here where, you know, maybe we'll get... But I'm not really sure that council wants to spend less money on streets.
True.
A lot of these are really close.
Well, yeah, yeah, they are, a lot of them are.
Certainly here, you know, they're very close, and, you know.
Yeah. And, and my numbers, as I said, are all rounded, so, you know, we just use, we just use the decimals here. I mean, they might even be closer if I had rounded, if I had rounded my numbers so much. So what does, what does, for those of, those who put money in for affordable housing development, what is that, what, like, what, you know, what were you thinking, you know, what types of projects were you thinking of with, under that umbrella?
Well, I'll start. Kinda, I was thinking left field, like, what if the city bought and rehabbed the building and figured out a way to create a $1 or $6 a month rental unit space for a certain number of units that all align under a certain level of income to help people get back on their feet on their next step in life, and then the second letter?
So kind of like a transitional housing program?
Yeah.
Others?
I was also thinking of opportunities for affordable first-home investments in integrated housing opportunities with people from a variety, a variety of income levels.
So does that look like existing housing, or is that new construction, or, I mean, cause you could look at doing a mixed-income neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, I hadn't necessarily thought about it specifically. I know there's different kinds of advantages in terms of, in terms of, it's like, like environmental sustainability, rehabilitating places, my understanding is that better, like, is it is better. But it's also possible we just need more places, and that's, I haven't really thought that part through.
Okay. Other thoughts, huh? Yeah.
Yeah, I think one other thing that I put in, affordable housing, it's not just for the people of low income, but I also was looking for, was on people who are first-time home buyer, that we can help those people too. At, at the same time, like, helping people instead of building new constructions, maybe have something that, you know, helping people replacing, maintaining existing property, things like that, and so, that's something that, that's why.
Okay. Kate?
So, incentives for private affordable housing development, would that belong under CIP or our, for our operating budget?
It, it, it depends. I think it could be, it could be under CIP. It wouldn't be, I don't, wouldn't be an operating expense. Well, it would, it would be if it was, if we were providing rent subsidies, you know, where it was an ongoing expense, if it was an upfront incentive to, for.
Like a loan down payment or something like that, that comes out of the pool?
Yeah. I think that that's what I imagine in that category, like, to be able to create a, a larger system where just all costs are low, rather than like specific, like housing, like one building that has low, low rent, if that makes sense.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Yeah, Andrew? I, I was thinking, all the incentivizations, as Kate was saying, also, I think there's a need, we're working right now to try to do housing for people, first, first-home housing. I think that's, that's indeed in our community, we're trying to, you know, through this program with Aaron Healy, I think there's potentially time in there. And then the other thing is a shelter, so it's even more basic. But I saw this great program in Green Bay where they're doing like a warming center. They, they, it's kinda like a transitional place, but it's, it's like a, I would say, a much more adequate Sojourner House, Sojourner and Warming Center, and I think that's like something that, they're, they're running out of space, and it's a really basic thing. It's like, there's people in our community who are not able to find that, don't, don't have a roof ahead. So, I think of it even at that most basic sense, that maybe we have opportunity to partner with hospitals, faith organizations, and do a pro, like a, you know, multimillion-dollar project like that.
Okay. Other thoughts for people who had?
I have kind of just a fragment of a thought, but it just seems like whatever money we could, it would be great to use it to attract private investment locally, so that, I mean, instead of like investment money, get partners that are just in on this problem, and they'll match our funding. But I think we'd have to have something on the table to begin to attract and show some seriousness. So that's kinda what I was thinking, is, I, I'd like to see it not just be the city moving, I'd like to see us attracting, but buy it from other.
Like it be a partnership or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Cause there's, there's pockets sometimes.
All right. Other thoughts? Catherine? anyone?
A little tidbit of, I think, what everyone has said. But I think it's hard to build new, I don't think you can build new for affordable housing, so it'd be more of a renovation of a building or a vacant spot or something or something. I feel like we can get more bang for our buck by renovating something rather than building a new affordable housing facility or housing-first facility, so.
Although one, yeah, one, you know, possibly building new, if somehow you can, you know, lower those initial expenses, and you're building smaller units, you know, it has an opportunity for.
With the land cheap enough and built smaller, smaller, smaller units, smaller two stories, so.
Not, well.
You think it's still gonna be cheaper than renovating Kmart? Add in ShopCo, yeah.
Well, this was in terms of single-family, I was referring to. So, in terms of single-family homes and, and getting that first-time home border. So I'm kinda joining a couple of concepts together here, that, if you're... So I'm kind of joining a couple of concepts together here that, if you're renovating, just sometimes renovating an old, bigger, older home might be more expensive through, you know, building a smaller, newer home, it's energy efficient and back to the sustainability.
So this kind of previous to council, but wasn't there momentum towards like a sustainable or affordable housing, like, I don't know, committee or group that was sort of most put up on city council plus, you know, private citizens? Is this something that could be used for administrative costs or just something like that?
Not for administrative costs, and it's gonna need to be, that's an operating expense, it really needs to be, break some order.
Sure.
Thing that does need to happen though. Thing that does need to happen though.
Yeah, so that, that, that is, I mean, so the seeds of that conversation are, are very much there in terms of the work and the study that's been there, and how do we keep that momentum going? And how is this, how do we incorporate citizen input into our, our efforts related to affordable housing as a community or as a region?
I haven't, I've thought, so what, Scott, his work through the affordable housing and, you know, is there anything on there that would, I'm just thinking, with the CIP, was there any CIP things on that list that, I mean, there's a lot on the list.
We'd have to go back and look.
Yeah, but I would be interested in seeing that.
But that's exactly what we're, I mean, we want to take this conversation, and you're kind of giving us the, the general direction of where you want to see it go, and then that's where we can go back with staff perspective and say, okay, hey, this one would take them where they want to go for this or that.
It's doing a lot of time and energy put into that, and we've got that citizen input already, so.
Right.
Okay, excellent.
Other, wait, nope.
Sure?
Yeah.
I can go last, so. Stream's going. What I would say is that I, to me, I feel like I would, when I think about this new generation of council, I think, what is this generation's gift to the community? I think the previous generation's gift was really on, strong on economic development, strong on downtown revitalization, without a doubt, like, a total strength. And so what I see here is a strength and a heart for just the inclusion of housing and the civic engagement, and thinking about how can we, how could the community best use the gifts of the council and their natural skill set to advocate for this and be a champion for this? I, I really see that, and so I would encourage you to encourage the organization, council and staff to maybe not see it necessarily in a way of like, how can we appease or just give enough things to the city council to make them happy versus really a totally different look to say, okay, so let's take a strengths-based approach. These are things that are in the wheelhouse here that this council can really leave a legacy on. Like previous councils have been able to leave a very positive, enduring gift to the community through their leadership.
Kate?
Charles, please.
All right, I, they have not been able to let go of this whole idea of what's going on with trailer parks and the idea that trailers themselves being mobile buildings don't appreciate in value after a period of time. So I'm just wondering about, when you talked about single, one-story, two-story, even if it could be a tiny home park that, that actually is able to maintain its value where a trailer park doesn't. So I'm, I'm just wondering about that.
Okay. Anything else on the affordable housing piece?
Engaged community, what were folks thinking when they dropped the dollar in that, in that particular basket?
You know what Andrew was thinking?
Yeah.
And that may be the same for everyone, but.
The participatory budgeting, yeah, that was for me.
Was there, was there anything other than participatory budgeting that folks had in their minds when they, when they put funding in that?
Catherine?
I think for myself, some of the challenges and opportunities we have is, our system for public engagement is just tough. It's not a commentary on this organization, it's just tough, and we see that with, I think, a well-thought-out plan for, we'll just say, a recent public improvement project that really, I, I don't feel that the, I, I just feel like there's a misalignment of perhaps perceptions and intentions, and it's not to place a blame on anybody, it's, that's kind of an outcome of the type of system we have. So just thinking, like, even with having participatory budgeting, I still don't think that kind of helps navigate through all these other public improvement projects that we'll have ongoing throughout the year, whether that's how to rename a public park to a, a project that's literally going to touch your house, which could be in any neighborhood at any given time, like, how do we improve the process? And there are practitioners of, you know, local government who have better ways to do that. So thinking about, can we start moving the needle to mine the spirit, excuse me, the letter of the law, which is making sure that we publicly notice things and check things off by statute? And then how do we match the spirit of helping people stay engaged and connected? And we'll probably still disagree at the end of the day, and that's okay on, on things, but for people to feel like, hey, my, my government in two thousand nineteen listens to me. That's a hard thing for other, you know, for other branches of government in our present time. I think more than ever, people want to feel connected and welcomed at the local level.
How does, can you help me with what that looks like in terms of a capital project?
Sure. So it could be the, the planning process, so my understanding is that capital funds can be, planning documents and planning processes can be spent on, CIP dollars can be used for that. So that could be one way to do that, could spend twenty thousand dollars, get a consultant to say, help us reimagine all of our public input processes for CIP-related things that will come up throughout the year. That's one example.
Good, good.
I like that idea, a lot of them, but CIP funds could be used as part of a public planning process, but that might, especially because we have more flexibility in those CIP dollars, that might be helpful, especially given that if otherwise, that would be pushed onto an operating budget.
Okay. Anything else on the community engagement?
I don't possess fun that category with the click and fix or those, those apps or things that when you see.
Complete management system, response systems, yep.
I don't know if that would be organizational about, I don't know, but yeah, something for people.
We're working on, Josh is working on that right now, City Services, as it relates to some asset management software we have right now, and trying to more fully implement that, and.
That's probably more of an operating, you know, budget.
But there could be technology, there could be technology.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, technology.
So you have to buy some software or buy some hardware that goes with it.
Yeah, I think that would help streamline it. And then people know that they're being heard too, you know, like, oh, I want to crosswalk here, and I send an email out, and I know if they get it, but then they know, you know, it just helps if they can see.
That's a fairly high priority for us, is to up, upping our game on how we receive information, track it, be able to report on it and follow up on it.
Yeah.
So, because it comes in from so many different places right now, and, you know, we just think there's, there's better ways of managing that.
Yes, great.
Other things on engaged community? Economic development, what we're, you know, we, we have our, you know, as I, as I said, this, this is really focused on, on general fund, so we have, you know, TIF incentives and, you know, tax increment financing. What were, what, what additional things were, were people thinking about for economic development?
Would investment into new land for industrial parks and things, would that follow that?
It could, it could, absolutely. It, it could either be a TIF expense or it could be a general fund expense.
I think you should import more South Dakota, we need more flat land.
I agree with you.
Gateway, the Gateway Corporation would definitely.
They got a lot of it out there, they let you use it.
Or you just gotta go to Southern Wisconsin.
I don't have any, I don't have any connections there.
So let me ask this in terms of, you know, so the, the question is new land for, like, an industrial park, does it also fall in the category for economic development if buying land for housing? In terms of, do you, do you see that as economic development?
I mean, people need to live somewhere, I guess, to work.
Or am I stretching the definition?
I think all these things can be economic development, that's why I didn't bring money.
Does RDA get some money out of it?
Yes.
So I'm gonna give another shout out to Green Bay, which is that they have a community-sponsored startup hub that's kind of like, and you go in, you get served, and you get kind of pointed in directions in order to find resources that you need to get to certain stages in your business. Now, I'm not saying that necessarily the city needs to step behind that, but I have been having a lot of conversations with various members of the chamber, the DBC, I'm on the Innovation Center Board now as a, as a business owner, and just started to connect some dots and see where, where the possibilities for alignments are, and I'm not sure if we need something new or if it's just a, a matter of finding ways to, like, use the resources that exist already and just kind of find a way to create some sort of uniting message or some sort of uniting board or purpose. And that's, that's kind of where I saw a lot of this investment as being possible, is like, how do we use that to create that initial push and alignment or center or whatever that looks like?
Small business, entrepreneur, entrepreneurial.
Not necessarily small business either, there's, if you look at some of the data, it's really helping sort of the second stage businesses grow that really drive economic growth in a region, and so finding ways to get greater access to resources or doing, I don't even know if it's possible to do like a short-term, like, loan fund to get specific needs met for stage-two businesses, usually this is like business strategy, marketing strategy, digital asset development, and some foundational stuff that then they can pay back as they grow up and, and outside of that box. And what this does is it shortens timelines and helps those companies that are already starting to grow faster, get that much bigger that much faster, and start to bring in jobs and new economic growth. So that's a lot to unpack, but that's where my mind goes when I think about investing in our economic future as a community. It's some sort of center or message or unification system, and then on top of that, maybe something that helps connect to resources, which will turn on.
Okay.
Can I just keep going? Is the intention still to be talking about the strategic plan?
And the work plans?
Yeah, I just want to know what I'm missing.
I'm thinking, given the time, we might shut off to another meeting. So you, you guys call, because there's still another half an hour, forty-five minutes at least of that topic.
With this topic?
The work.
No, no, if we go on to the strategic plan and the work plans.
I'll, I'll be building, but I have to be.
What else? Thank you for your time, Kate.
Yeah.
Jeremy?
Different ways we can invest in public transit, like, cross shelters, in terms of how that may fit in with the business community and commercial districts. In terms of economic development piece.
Okay.
Just people being able to get to work in general, there, there's all sorts of parts of town that.
There's a lot of things we can call economic development.
I'm just trying to, because I really see it.
But I say that just, but they, it all ties together.
Getting, getting people, getting people to work.
So why? I think the, the past councils and, and city employees have done just a marvelous job at getting the streets up to stuff, getting parks and, and new amenities built up. Now, you know, we need the next generation of jobs to come in and really feel, you know, what's gonna bring more people in more.
Can I, can I just add one thing briefly on economic development?
Yep.
Probably goes with engaged community. I think to have a conversation around, like, are we spending our time or are we supporting the efforts to have enough of a mix of the different types of businesses? So it, just being really intentional about that, just thinking we have a new, a newer generation of business owners that have come up that are just doing amazing things, especially kind of elevating some of our profile on the creative arts of looking at some of the shops that are doing music, small boutiques, just things along those lines, branding, design, design houses, and we have a lot of those popping up, and so are we supporting that? And often, I would say, people who are in the startup place are also sometimes financially struggling. I know of a business owner who's very, very well-respected and is living under the poverty level. And so figuring out, are we doing enough to support them? And if not, should we rededicate some efforts for making sure those businesses are being supported?
Okay. Well, there's, there's a, renewable, renewable energy, you know, so I, I mean, if you look at it in terms of percentage, there's twice there, but, so.
Thankful problem.
The dollar got renewed.
The dollar got renewed?
That's always, yeah.
That's the money that we save when we didn't. So.
I think that pretty much. The big, the kind of the big, big ones that jumped out.
Can I, can I say too, like, I think, at least for my part, it wasn't that I don't see value in ongoing street sidewalk improvements, I think that if we just take a little bit of a broader view of it and say, can we just ease off of it for a little bit while we push some other things forward and get those things some momentum and then come back to that? And I don't want to like lose the quality of the streets that we have or anything like that. I don't want to create a situation where we're having to kind of catch up to get back there, but at least that's where my mind was when I picked my investments, wasn't like, oh, streets don't need it. It was more just like, why don't we see what we can do to get some other stuff, some momentum there, and then kind of come back to it maybe, you know, a year or two later?
Well, and, and I certainly don't think, yeah, I mean, that is always the challenge, is, you know, how do you continue, continue to maintain what you have and still move, and still move the community forward? That's the challenge.
It seems to me too that these conversations are the ones that provide the wheels underneath our strategy, if there is a strategy for the city to go to referendum. It's always, it's, it's, it's not that, it's a better presentation if you're talking about growth and enrichment and vibrancy than say, oh my gosh, we're, we're gonna go down the tubes if we don't have more money. It's this kind of conversation that shows for the vision with just a little bit more of that tax dollar available, look, look at what we would have. We would have the streets and, 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 and that to me is, is a strategy.
Okay.
Excellent. Um, just wrapping, wrapping up real quickly, I just want to give you a little bit of an overview of where, where we're, I'm seeing things going for the CIP that we'll be developing, and these are just kind of some real broad parameters right now. Seeing that we're probably going to be using around four million dollars in fund balance in twenty, twenty twenty, probably be looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of about seven point six million dollars in new borrowing, and these are just really based upon, to some extent, based upon projects that have been submitted, to some extent, based upon our financial policies and how much debt we're gonna be retiring and those sorts of things. Debt service will likely go up somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, or about four point three percent, cost the owner of a, a average house, which is now about a hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, about twelve bucks a year. However, in twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five, looking at debt service increases averaging about a million dollars a year, we don't have, our, the way that our debt is currently structured is we don't have, we're not retiring a lot of debt in those years. So when we start adding debt, it's just going on top of our current debt service as opposed to say, you know, we're retiring three hundred thousand dollars of debt, we're adding six hundred, so the net impact is three hundred thousand. It, it, it's really just getting added on top of that. And I'm currently looking at doing some things with our debt service structure that may help with that, but that's where we're sitting, where we're sitting right now. So the council's financial policy is that unassigned fund balance should be greater than or equal to fifteen percent of the next year's general fund expenditures, with the goal being twenty percent, and that funds in excess of fifteen percent may be used for capital expenditures. So right now, my years are a little off, right now, we're sitting around twenty-five, twenty-six percent on our, on our fund balance, which is, which is high. which is, which is high, the green box here is where the target is. I see, over the course of the next five years, so over the course of the CIP, that we start drawing down the fund balance, and we start getting it down into about this seventeen percent range, which is really right in the middle of that goal, for the most part, between fifteen and twenty percent. And, you know, this is all, this is, in this model, it's all predicated upon us continuing to have, you know, returning that two to three million dollars to fund balance at the end, at the end of every year, or to, to allow this to, to happen. So, it's kind of a gradual drawdown of fund balance, so that we're able to fund the capital projects, um, and minimize the amount of, amount of debt that we're issuing. With the, uh, debt that I see us issuing, so, uh, we're sitting, sitting here right now. The green line here represents twenty-five percent of our total property tax levy, which is, uh, the council's limit, uh, as far as, uh, based upon the council's policy, uh, for debt service. And as you can see, our debt service is continuing to grow and continuing to get closer to that line. But, we don't, you know, we're, we're leaving a little bit of a, little bit of a margin here, a little bit of a gap here. And that is, you know, as, as Kate was saying, you know, that's, that's, that's not a hard and fast, hard and fast limit. But, you know, we don't, you know, for financial planning purposes, we don't wanna get really right up to that limit, because, um, you know, there may be some unforeseen, uh, circumstances or situations that arise that, um, you know, that we wanna leave ourselves a little bit of debt capacity. And then, I just wanna make sure that, uh, this is in the back of people's minds as well, as we, we talked about the general fund and the property tax impact. We do have, uh, the library project, which is, um, anticipating about eight and a half million dollars in new borrowing in twenty twenty. That'll increase debt service by about seven hundred seventy-one thousand, or about twenty-five dollars per ye, uh, or year. On the owner of a hundred seventy-five thousand, four thousand dollar house. So, that's, that would be on top of that, um, that twelve dollars that I, that I, that I mentioned previously. And, we don't need to spend a lot of time on this, these are things that, um, you know, that, that we need you to all be thinking about. But, you know, is drawing down the fund balance to approximately eighteen percent of the general fund expenditures over five years of the CIP acceptable? And so, is it acceptable to, to have a, a slow drawdown of that fund balance, uh, still keeping it within your policy, so that we, uh, can, can fund the capital projects and, um, and minimize the amount of debt that we're issuing? And are these increases, twelve dollars, uh, on the general fund side, and twenty-five dollars on the library, and those are both, both hit on the twenty twenty-one, uh, budget year or tax year, uh, is that, you know, is that, is that okay? And then, going out to years twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five, we're looking at about an average of thirty-five dollars a year increase in property taxes each year, uh, to fund that gap, to fund the, fund the cap, capital.
Partly because of the debt service.
Because of the debt service, right.
And that doesn't include the other entities either?
No.
No.
That's just the city.
What, what does that drawdown of the, uh, uh, fund balance, uh, going to do to our boundary?
What, what rating agency, well, first of all, we're keeping it within our policy, which is what's very important to the rating agencies.
And that you have a policy.
Right, that you have a policy, first of all, and that you're complying with that policy. The other thing is, and, and, you know, every year, we have this discussion with the, the rating agency, is, you know, they see a drawdown of the fund balance. And in, what, what we always emphasize is that we're using it for capital projects, and we're using it to maintain our, our infrastructure. What rating agencies don't wanna see are communities neglecting their infrastructure, and, you know, having their streets deteriorate and other things. So, you know, what we emphasize with them is that, um, is that we are using it for those purposes. And then the other thing we emphasize with them, again, is our, our positive, um, financial results every, every year, that, uh, we are able to replenish that fund balance, uh, o- over time. It hasn't, it hasn't hurt us so far in our ratings, and I don't think, um, it really will, as long as we're, again, using it to maintain our infrastructure. That one-time expense, or one-time revenue versus one-time expense, if we were using it for operations, that'd be a different story. Because, you know, that, that's not sustainable, but as long as we're using it for capital expenses, we're, we're usually okay.
Jay, off of Dave's question, if we get it down into that eighteen percent, that's gonna save us some money as we're going out for, to borrow? That's gonna give us a better rate?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we keep it within that range, it keeps our rating where it has been, and keeps our interest rates low. If we drop below fifteen percent, and we fall out of compliance with our policy, we're, we're gonna get hit with that.
So, there's savings to be realized by making sure that we're, that we're meeting that goal?
Yes, yes.
And that, we don't really know what those savings are, but, but we're hoping that that's how it pans out.
So, what, what it means is that, so the rating, the ratings, so when we go out to sell debt, basically, there's a rating on that. And the stronger the rating, uh, the better interest rate we get, right? Because it'll go at a lower interest rate, so we have to pay less interest. The, the, the worse the bond rating, or the, the more the bond rating agencies, you know, downgrade us as an organization, then it costs us more with our, with our debt when we have to go out for it.
The riskier the investment, the more interest you have to pay, pay the investors.
So, could we?
One more question. What is, what has been that, uh, I see it would be an average of thirty-five for the years of twenty twenty-three through twenty-five.
Yep.
I think I remember a number of years that we were in the mid twenties.
Yes.
So, this is above by roughly ten to fifteen dollars from what we normally had in the, in the teens and.
Yeah, for the last several years, we've been in that, you're correct, we've been in that, that.
Twenty-four.
Kind of twenty, low, mid twenties.
Yeah.
And again, this is, this is being driven by the fact that our, the way our, our, the way our debt is currently, currently structured, is we've got several years where our debt service payments aren't decrease, aren't decreasing. And, and so, any new debt we issue just gets added on top of that, David?
And then, first point, was drawing down eighteen percent acceptable? And I guess, uh, what are we going, what are we, what is going to be unable to do if we keep it at twenty percent?
We can, we can certainly, you know, I mean, if that's, uh, the direction of council, we can certainly tell you what projects we weren't able to fund in the CIP, and have a conversation about that.
Keep in mind.
Personally, I would like to see it stay at no less than twenty. But, if going to eighteen allows us to do something that's really important, and has, uh, uh, the long-term benefit of really, and the short-term benefit of doing something great for the city, uh, where there's going to be a good return on it, uh, it's probably worth it. But unless I know what, what it is, then, oh, I don't know that I would support it.
Okay. Other thoughts on any of those bullet points up there?
I just wanna, yeah, and, and part of doing this is, you know, so there aren't, aren't surprises when we come back and, and, you know, the, probably a little bit of sticker shock now, and you have to kind of think through it, uh, and whether or not those are acceptable numbers or not acceptable numbers.
And we had some awareness of this coming in, because we knew the library was coming up.
Yeah, I told you about that, I told you about that last year.
Two years in a row, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and again, that's why we do the, do the planning, is we know what's coming up.
Question about, um, just a potential referendum. So, I appreciate the timeline that was shared recently with council on if council decided to go for it, this is what it could look like. Could you, I had a little trouble understanding what year that would be effective in. I'm thinking that wouldn't be effective until twenty twenty-one? It wouldn't be necessarily for this year creating two budgets, like, if one went to referendum and one was out?
Well, any, any, the, the way the statute is structured is that it, it for, it essentially forces you to have a referendum in the fall.
This fall, you're talking about?
Any fall.
Any fall.
Uh-huh.
Any fall. Um, because you have to have, you have to know what your levy limit is in order to have the referendum. And we don't find that out until August. And so, with notification requirements and other things passing resolution, really, it forces you into a fall referendum, any year, which basically forces us to prepare, or to prepare two budgets. One, if the referendum passes, this one goes forward, if it doesn't pass, then this one, then this one goes forward. But in any, any year, um, you, you're really forced to do it in the fall, unless this, unless the statute changes at some point in time.
So, are you, are you looking for any direction from council on if they're interested in going down that road for twenty or twenty-one? I guess, as you're preparing this, you're asking, you don't want us to be surprised, and then there's also a possibility they have two.
Well, it's really more, I think it would probably be more, I guess it depends upon what the referendum dollars are being used for. Normally, we think about that in terms of the operating budget, we're really working on the capital budget right now. Because, because debt service is exempt from levy limits, we can usually do the capital, you know, things we wanna do in the capital budget without a referendum. The operating budget, because of levy limits, and the, the referendum allows you to exceed levy limits, which only affect really the operating budget, so. But, certainly, um, if council is interested in, in pursuing a referendum, um, you know, the sooner we know, the better. Because then we can start down the path of, like I said, preparing, and, and we need to know what, what the, what, how you want those dollars directed, because that, that is part of.
How the question gets.
Yeah, it's part of the question, part of the question, is what those dollars are gonna be used for. And, and, and again, that, that allows us to prepare two, you know, two, two budgets with and without.
So, I'll just speak for myself, I'm not interested in bringing one forward, or one right now, for the big reason that I think a standalone referendum question, when that's the only thing on the ballot, I think it's gonna be challenging for engagement in the community. So, if the community went to referendum, I think it's better to do it for fall of twenty twenty.
Presidential.
And then, if, if it's passed, to, um, have an effective one-one, twenty twenty-one.
Right.
That being said, um, and other people may feel differently, I'm wondering if council would be interested in giving direction to the staff to continue to, um, enumerate more of a, a gap assessment, or the things that the city can't do? And that will help us document the narrative, so there is information on that last year, information this year. And wondering if that's of interest to give direction to staff as they start preparing the budget, that we help lay the groundwork for that narrative.
That's great.
I think we started that, I started that discussion.
That was the intent of the way we structured some of the conversation last year, was so that that gap could start to, you know, we could start to identify what that gap looks like from an operational perspective. And, uh, I guess I would like to hear more about that, because, um, that's something, I, I, I would, I would, I mean, it's totally your call, but would agree that if you wanted to go there, the, the timing is probably better for twenty-one versus, um, twenty. In other words, next fall, fall, fall of twenty versus fall of twen, of nineteen. Just because the amount of time and work and effort that it would take to, um, to, to, to put this story together, the information together, um, you know, to be effective.
Yeah.
But, we are, you know, the CIP is here, but, you know, the operating budget's right around the corner. And to the extent that we, we structure the, the presentation on the operating budget, and the questions related to, I mean, if, if that's a direction you want us to be going, we can, we can put time and energy into that. And if, you know, if it's not, then, you know, we'd probably put some time and energy in other, other ways, other places.
Is there a substantial cost that we need to budget for, as far as the lobbying or marketing or organizational part of a referendum?
I don't think we can use probably ten dollars for that.
Yeah, we can't use city dollars to, I don't believe we can use city dollars to do that.
We'd have to have an outside group, but we couldn't even really discuss that here, I don't think.
Yeah, so, yeah, there, we'll have to research what the restrictions are. I don't, I'm pretty certain we can't spend staff time doing, doing much of that.
We can provide, provide basic information.
Right.
We can provide gap analysis, but where that goes and how that's used has to be with other, other people.
Sure, but whether it's in-house or not, we still have to have money set aside to cover the cost if we're hiring someone else?
No, no, it's like an outside organization.
Of cover all.
We couldn't contract for that, like, an independent political group would say, we wanna be for or against advocating for this.
Citizens for a Better O'Clare, or whatever.
Yeah.
City money couldn't be used.
Yeah, I don't think we can use city money to promote it.
Again, we, we can supply the, the raw information and the data, um, but, but in terms of how that's used and how that's presented to the community, uh, has to be elsewhere.
So, one, I guess, one other consideration for the ask on preparing the data is, I mean, to see what council's thoughts are on contextualizing it in this current state of the levy limits, not taking a position, if they're good or bad. Just the present reality of it is that it's simply not enough to keep up with the prosecuting business. The league has put out excellent talking points, Steve and I serve on the policy committee, they've given us lots of stuff. So, I think to help contextualize that, it's not that we are not receiving additional money, it's, it's just we can't keep up with that.
Yeah.
Our revenues are not keeping up with the, the, either our growth or inflation.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and, I mean, we, I mean, we have lots of data that shows that, that, you know, the revenues that we receive are not allowing us to even keep up with the, you know, the services and programs we currently have, much less be able to take care of services and growth that's happening in the community.
Right, well, I mean, it's, comes down to question, you want people or you want stuff? Or do you want less people and you want less stuff? I mean, that's it, and most of the budget is gonna go towards people, which is, makes sense, it's good. Current, past, future, and our money that we get from the state does not even come close to keeping up with that. And I think that can be demonstrated in a very factual, neutral way.
Absolutely, Cam.
Yep. Other thoughts on this topic?
So, do we need a separate work session to talk about this more, about what steps and get all, or what would be the next step to do? I feel like I need more information though, too.
So, more information is, like, what the process would be?
Yeah, or just having more.
For a referendum or for this?
Yeah, referendum, sorry.
Yeah.
But, let's, let's.
Sorry.
Let's talk about, yeah, let's talk about, talk about what might be the best approach. And get, get back to what we think the best approach would be.
I think the timeline that you outlined, to me, seemed like not enough time if we were to take it up in a calendar year. So, when you circle back, I'd be interested in building out some additional time, like, even having a discussion in January, if we're allowed to have one. And just to give you all ample time, give citizens outside this organization ample time to decide their engagement.
So, can council, can, can council talk about it?
I believe you, I believe you can.
So.
I believe you can.
And do we have to have a, a unified message?
We can probably talk to the referendum group for the school district, they had their own outside, outside group, and they would be on a regular basis and have talking points.
Cause I was just, oh.
It's, I, I would say that it's best to have a unified message. I mean, it doesn't ever be exactly the same.
Can you guys say that to your members?
All right, let us, let us, um, I mean, so there's some, what I'm hearing is there's some interest in further exploring your options.
Not on my part, there's none.
Okay?
The question I have is why, going to do it? Why would you wanna do it to cover, uh, operating budget expenses? I mean, that seems to me to be counterintuitive. If you're going to have a one-time funding, which is a referendum, why would you not wanna do it for, uh, capital instead of borrowing seven million dollars or eight million dollars two years in a row? Why would you not, uh, use a referendum for that?
Yeah, the referendum, the referendum to exceed levy limits can either be one-time, or it can be ongoing.
You could do either or both.
Or, and/or, you could even sunset it, you could say, we're gonna do it for ten years, and then it, and then it, then it goes away. But the referendum to exceed levy limits is ongoing. It's different than a school referendum. It's different than a school referendum, which are for, well, I guess their referendum was, had operating expenses in it as well, but, you know, the schools have to go to referendum.
Only for a certain number of years.
For basically any building, any capital building project, whereas we don't have to do that. But the referendum to exceed levy limits can be, can be ongoing. So if it, if it's, you know, structured that, you know, we can exceed levy limits by, you know, $500,000 to hire five new police officers, that, that 500 is there every year.
Well, if this discussion is going to be ongoing, I guess I would like to know, I would like to have part of that discussion as justification and in pretty good detail as to why in the hell we're considering it.
Absolutely.
And not just the willie, I don't want to even go in there.
I think that was, was Catherine's point, is to have that discussion about, start that dialogue about what the, what the unmet needs are in the, in the implementation.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for the, the conversation, the input. We will be going back and looking at the CIP with this perspective, and you had to bring back a CIP that helps align with, with what your priorities and what your interests are. I'm presuming you do not want to spend another half an hour, 45 minutes talking about work plans, because people are losing interest in different things, and we can certainly schedule that, as, as, we'll queue that up as soon as we can, so.
The materials were helpful.
Yeah.
We need, we need all everyone, and we members especially.
Right.
So if we would plan it now?
Is that, no, we'll, we'll look at the schedule, you know, we, you know, we tried only have one topic for a work session, we thought, well, we could do two on this one. So we, we will look for gaps, and if there's a gap, we'll put a work session in and revisit this.
Well, I think just one of my intentions with the work plan is to give direction to you to help fill the budget, so I worry if we don't get that tidied up very soon.
Kathy, do you remember, do we have, do we have a work plan scheduled for next week?
Yes, yes. CIP, the next two.
Next two.
Do we have to be in a council meeting next?
No.
Maybe we could come in a tad early before public time.
Next week, I think you'll have something else for that, doing that slot. But we'll, we'll try not to let it slip out too far, I guess, I mean, because I agree, I'd like to be able to.
Well, it's a clear policy document that we have to be able to get to you so you can give, the department has ample time for their budget instruction. I, I would encourage you to even think about a doable outside of council sessions, just to see, I mean, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but this is something we have to address very soon.
All right. All right. Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912 or TDD 715-839-1689 or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.